This meeting's date, place, and time has been disseminated as required under the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975. Copies of the agenda are also posted on the city's website and Lyndon TV for the public. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct your prayer and flag salute?
God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled, and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations. This we ask in thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the council chambers is through the three doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided in the front of the room with your name and address. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you must take a call, please leave the council chambers to do so. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ormond.
Here.
Javick.
Present.
Caldwell.
Present.
Mohammed.
Present.
Rivas.
Present.
Delgado.
Here.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hudak.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Here. Can we have approval of the public session minutes of February 16, 2025, please?
Yes, Council President, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the public meetings minutes for February 18, 2025. Ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Epstein.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to our presentations. We have the accreditation by the New Jersey State Police Chiefs Association for the Lyndon Police Department. I'd like to ask Mr. Harry Delgado, the program director, to come up. Mayor, Chief Hart.
Excuse me, the significance of the achievement. Someone is going to get my back, and I apologize. Mr. Delgado, by the way. And so, as someone said to me earlier, as I was sitting there waiting for the beginning of the meeting, what are you here for? It's an accreditation presentation. Well, that's a big deal. Well, that's an understatement. It is a real, real big deal for the Lyndon Police Department, and I'll say why. So, out of all the agencies that would be eligible to apply and receive accreditation, there's almost 600 in the state of New Jersey, but only half of those have been able to make it through this rigorous process. The Lyndon Police Department is one of them. Not only that, there are police departments that actually use a third party to help them. The Lyndon Police Department did it on their own, at the strength of over 150 officers. That is truly remarkable. So, if you indulge me for two minutes, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement. So, the Lyndon Police Department has made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regarded statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission has held to transparently demonstrate the professionalism and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies. It is designed to enhance professionalism and transparency in the state's public safety system. During this uniquely challenging times and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies such as the Lyndon Police Department to follow standardized practices and policies is a potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment of time and resources. Now, accreditation gives an agency a preparedness plan and verification of excellence. Accreditation status represents a significant professional achievement. I'll spare some of the details that I have here to go straight into part of what was submitted to me after the onsite assessment, after the rigorous three years, at the very least, that it takes to become accredited. There's an onsite visit. There's an in-person visit that we make, and we make sure that we go through all the standards in this case, 112 standards they have to go through. There's over 400-plus items, proofs of compliance. So, out of the report, I'll read to you. Under the leadership of Chief Hart, a high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism is evident within the agency. It is also evident that the accreditation process has greatly benefited the Lyndon Police Department. Chief Hart and his team, through their hard work and dedication, have fully embraced their accreditation process specifically in the areas of policy development, best police practices, internal compliance, technology and equipment, and community engagement. Leading a large police department through this rigorous process, and I say this not professionally but personally, despite many challenges in law enforcement today, budgets, manpower, emerging technologies, and for us not to have found one single issue that we had to argue over during that very visit is truly remarkable, and I can't stress that enough. So, it is the opinion of the assessment team that the Lyndon Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency which exemplifies all the tenets of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. So, therefore, tonight, it is indeed my honor, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, to congratulate Chief David Hart, his command staff, accreditation managers Sergeant Leon Pastor, the members of the Lyndon Police Department, the mayor, the council president, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for having achieved their initial accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that have made this commitment to excellence in policing. So, to all, indeed, congratulations.
And we'd like to ask the command staff from the Lyndon Police Department to please come forward.
I'd like to thank Dr. Harry Delgado and the New Jersey State Chiefs of Police Association for his presentation tonight. It's truly an honor. This has been a long time in coming for the city of Lyndon and our department. It's our most coveted recognition. As the doctor said, it ensures that the Lyndon Police Department is in compliance with best police practices here in New Jersey. The preparation review of all these documents was a Herculean task. I want to thank again Sergeant Pastor, who was our overall initial manager for the certification. I'd also like to thank my command staff, who are all here tonight. Captain Williams, Captain Gunther, Captain Cassioppo, Captain Bachman, and Captain Sanchez. Sometimes you see them and sometimes you don't. There's a lot of moving parts here in the course of a day. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, but the captains keep our department coherent with our officers and our supervisors, so thank you very much. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Richmond, who was our initial manager, got it going, and then Sergeant Pastor carried it on to the finality. I want to thank our mayor, Mayor Armstead, who's been an ardent supporter of the police departments since I've been chief, our council, our council president, all our members here, I'm sorry, from my back to you, but thank you for your continued support, the finances, and the manpower and the resources to keep our department strong, our citizens safe. Thank you. And finally, I'd like to thank each and every one of our members of this agency. This includes our supervisors, our officers, unsung heroes, our dispatchers, our support staff, our civilian staff, and even our crossing guards. We have 60 crossing guards here in the city. It truly takes a village to accomplish the mission that we accomplished here, and it's done day in and day out by these officers and all of our rank and file. So, thank you all for what you do. Thank you to the mayor and the council for your support, our citizens who are here tonight who support our PD day in and day out, and thank you to each and every member of this great police department. Thank you.
Chief and command staff, on behalf of this council, we'd like to congratulate you on this great achievement. Congratulations once again. Okay, at this time, I'd also like to call up Amy Paluso from our Board of Health and ask the mayor, let's go down. We have another award, Healthy Town Up and Coming, that Lyndon's achieved.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, we're very proud to announce that the city of Lyndon's Mayor's Wellness Committee, consisting of members of the mayor's office, the health department, and the recreation department, that we have received the Healthy Town Up and Coming designation in our first year of application for the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. This is awarded by the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute, and the designation is awarded each year to those municipalities that go above and beyond to improve the health and wellness in their communities through innovative programs in areas such as exercise, healthy eating, and mental health education and awareness. Each year, communities throughout the state participate in the Mayor's Wellness Campaign and complete a comprehensive application outlining the research that we've done to identify the community health needs and highlights the actions that the towns have taken to make their communities healthier places to work, to live, to age in, and to play. In our application, the Mayor's Wellness Committee showed that through the health department, the recreation department, and the mayor's office, and partnership with other community organizations, that the city of Lyndon offers a wide variety of health and wellness opportunities to our diverse community. I'd like to thank the staff of the Board of Health and the recreation department and the mayor's office for all of the work that we have done to earn this award, and also all of the other departments throughout the city that make those activities that we provide to our community possible. It all is a team effort, and we also have to thank the city council for all of their support, and of course, we could not have a Mayor's Wellness Committee without the support and encouragement of Mayor Derek Armstead. So, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, in conjunction with that, we have a resolution declaring the week of April 7, 2025 through April 13, 2025, as Public Health Week in the city of Lyndon. And the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the week of April 7 through April 13, 2025, is National Public Health Week. And the theme this year is "It Starts Here." And whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas there are significant and avoidable disparities in health status due to social-economic conditions that influence the health of people and communities, and addressing these social determinants of health helps all members in our communities to have the same opportunities to attain their full health potential. So, basically, the theme here is "It Starts Here." And we have to recognize that public health is very important and that we have to do everything humanly possible to level the playing field. And so, this resolution, very lengthy, so I only read a couple paragraphs, but you all get the gist. It starts here, you know, and we have to, and as much as we have to look out for ourselves and our families, we have to look out for others who are somehow less fortunate than we are, and make sure that health opportunities and all the medications and health awareness and health opportunities are afforded to us all. So, and the resolution is signed by the council president and the mayor. So, thank you all.
Okay, we'll now move on to ordinances on hearing, beginning with ordinance 69-3.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 3, Police Regulations of an Ordinance Entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Lyndon, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the City of Lyndon. Section 1, Chapter 3, Section 3-2, Model Noise Ordinance shall be, and the same is hereby amended as follows: Delete Section 3-2 in its entirety; Add new Section 3-2.
Has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-3 and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordered 69-4.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Lyndon, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the council of the City of Lyndon. Section 1, Chapter 7, Traffic, shall be, and the same is hereby amended as follows: Chapter 7, Traffic, 7-33, Handicap Parking Regulations, 7-33.1A, Handicap Parking on Street, add 1400 Bowers Street, 1101B Hollywood Road, and 2805 Parkway Avenue.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to close the ordinance, I move to close the hearing on ordinance 69-4, adopted and ask for a second, please.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-5.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic, of an Ordinance Entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Lyndon, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the council of the City of Lyndon. Section 1, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-35.7, entitled "Regulations for Parking in Admissible Parking Lots adjoining the Railroad," shall be amended as follows.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move that we close the hearing on ordinance number 69-5. The ordinance adopted and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-6, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $401,500 for Acquisition of Sports Utility Vehicles and Van for the Police Department for and by the City of Lyndon, and Authorizing the Issuance of $381,425 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to close the hearing on ordinance 69-6, adopted and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-7, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $310,200 for the Acquisition of Various Items of Capital Equipment and Vehicles for the Fire Department for and by the City of Lyndon, and Authorizing the Issuance of $294,690 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, the mayor requested to make a quick announcement before we continue.
I just wanted to announce to the audience that we're now live streaming. We're up on YouTube and Fios, however Comcast is down. So, you can now watch our council meetings without having Comcast or Fios. You can go right to YouTube, and you'll see it live.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, bond ordinance 69-8.
We didn't do a roll call, ma'am. We didn't do a roll call on seven.
Okay, on seven, all right. Has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on ordinance 69-7? Okay, please come forward.
Really quick, what are the vehicles? Can someone describe what are the vehicles that are being purchased?
Okay, Chief Asko?
Yes, good evening. So, two of the vehicles are four Escapes that will be used for Fire Prevention Bureau. The rest of the equipment is our personal protective equipment, which deals mostly with our turnout gear and fire hose, stuff, that type of equipment.
These vehicles that you're talking about, are they new to complement what we currently have, or are they replacing some old ones?
Exactly. They're going to replace two older ones, I think, the 2007 and a 2008 Ford Explorer.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ordered 69-8, please.
Council President.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-7 and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-8, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $1,215,500 for the Various Capital Improvements and Acquisition for the Division of Public Works for and by the City of Lyndon, and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,154,725 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I'd like to have the hearing closed on ordinance number 69-8. The ordinance adopted and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-9, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $1,168,200 for the Acquisition of a Fire Engine and Other Related Equipment for the Fire Department for and by the City of Lyndon, and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,19790 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-9 and request a second.
We have a second? Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-10, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $880,000 for Landfill Renovations of Downshoots for and by the City of Lyndon in the County of Union, New Jersey, and Authorizing the Issuance of $836,000 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to close the hearing on ordinance 69-10, adopted and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-11, please.
Bond Ordinance Authorizing Various Capital Improvements for the Division of Engineering in and for the City of Lyndon in the County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $770,000. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $731,500 Bonds or Notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to move we close the hearing on ordinance 69-11 and ask for a second, please.
Second. And adopt the ordinance.
And adopt it, and ask for a second, please.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordered 69-12, please.[1570.15]
Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden. Section one, that Chapter ten dash eleven point nine entitled Removal by Owner or City shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced as follows.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please? Oh, okay. Just state your name.
John Kizer, Linden, twenty-three West Muscle Avenue. Can you just let the citizens know what was it reduced from and what is it now? Just so people can know at home.
Amy, could you have that? Oh, Danny?
Yes, Mr. Kizer. The ordinance currently is a ten-day notice. It's being reduced to three.
Oh, three days, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, ordinance sixty-nine thirteen?
We need a motion.
Oh, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number sixty-nine dash twelve. Move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, ordinance sixty-nine thirteen, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter seven, Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled an Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, nineteen ninety-nine, passed on, passed November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine, and approved November twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden. Section one, that Chapter seven, Traffic seven dash thirty-five point five, shall be created and entitled mobile payment systems as follows. Seven dash thirty-five mobile payment system, the parking fees for a mobile payment system shall be limited to two hours at a rate of a dollar thirty-five per hour.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes. Madam President, I move to close the hearing on ordinance sixty-nine thirteen and adopt it, request it, and ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Will now move on to dissent agenda items. All items listed with asterisks are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. We have items number one through five this evening. Can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to move for set items one through five and adopt it and ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, we have three retirements this evening, which I'd like to announce the names and wish them the best. We have in our Police Department Sergeant Antonio LaCosta. In Parking and Transportation, General Supervisor Tyrone Givens. And in Public Works, Heavy Equipment Operator Javier Rivera Vasquez. On behalf of the City Council, we'd like to thank you all for your service and wish you the best in your retirement.
Amen.
Okay, we'll now move on to Governing Body Reports, beginning with Councilwoman Orman.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to start off with my finance report. Approval is requested for the following finance actions. The payment of bills totaling one million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and five cents. Bills have been signed by the Mayor, Council President, and Finance Chairwoman, and a detailed check register and vouchers are on file in a clerk's office. We are in receipt of the investment made by the City Treasurer for the month of February at the rate of four point one five percent. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, now my Division of Transportation and Properties. I hereby submit the monthly financial report for the Division of Transportation and Parking for the month of February two thousand and twenty-five. This report includes the collection of on and off-street parking meters, railroad parking lots, railroad parking permits, and merchant parking permits. The Triton side collections, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. New York side collections, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Railroad credit card transaction, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Railroad permits, seventy-six dollars. Railroad mobile payment parking, thirteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Online railroad permits, zero. Parking meter collections, eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents. Merchant permits, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for grand total of forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, and this was respectfully submitted by Tyrone L. Givens, our General Supervisor of Traffic Maintenance. For the rest of my report, I would just like to speak a little bit about the Accident Review Committee. We are currently taking seriously speeding in the city. We just want to let everyone know that it's not just outsiders that are coming into our community that are flying through the streets. It's some of our own local residents that are not adhering to the actual speed limit. We are going to take a very hard stand against that. I spoke with the chief, and there's not going to be any more warnings for speeding. It's going to be ticket and let it roll. We have to do everything possible to keep our children and our residents safe. It is a serious quality of life issue. Now, the Linden Heritage and Cultural Committee. This Sunday, we are hosting our annual Women's Tea in honor of Women's History Month. We're honoring three dynamic women, Linda Spano. For many years, Linda has assisted the Arts Department in Linden High Schools with costumes for all of their plays, and she also served as the Transportation Coordinator for many years. Terri Todd is another one of our recipients. Terri's claim to fame is something that I just absolutely think is wonderful. She has taken a stance on bullying by taking students and having them create fashion, and she has an organization in our schools called FAB, Fashion Against Bullying, where our students can create their own unique attire and feel awesome about themselves. And I think it's absolutely wonderful. Our last recipient will be Courtney Valani. Courtney Valani has been a partner with the Linden School District and the City of Linden for over two decades, as she provides over forty-one routes throughout our district to children going to our various schools. Courtney also has been outstanding with helping us whenever we're in a pinch, whenever there's a sick child or a child that gets stranded because they missed their bus. And last, Courtney also is part of our family, and when we lost our beloved former Superintendent of Schools, Rocco Tomazic, Courtney made it possible for our school district to go down to pay respects to Rocco. And like I said, her contributions to the city are just unparalleled. Besides, the contributions to our Christmas tree lighting and so many other things that she has done to make Valani not only just a part of the community, but in essence, a family. I also want to speak about utility repair that's going on in our community. A lot of water lines are being replaced, and yes, they are literally tearing up our lawns. Whether or not you called them and told them that you had lead piping or not, they're coming in and they're repairing. A lot of gravel, a lot of rocks. We're just asking to be patient. Pick the big rocks up. Let me know if your property is just really in that bad of shape with all the rocks. I will provide a list to engineering. Don't know what we can do about it, but we need to let our voices be heard, that that's unacceptable. We take pride in our lawns. I know I do. So, it's just unacceptable. We do have to have it there until the ground settles, but the big boulders and rocks, it's just not a pretty thing. If you need trees, please let me know, because we do plant trees in the spring, we do plant trees in the fall. You can reach me, you know, LOrman@Linden-NJ.gov. I'll be more than glad to submit your name. Last but not least, on my list, I would like to address a safety issue in the City of Linden, throughout the whole entire city, when it comes to our school buses. We have lots of children that take buses. Buses that are contracted by the city, by our Board of Education, I should say, and private contractors. Both sets of buses have equal rights to pick up children door-to-door and equal rights to pick up children at the corners. We do not tell anyone that you cannot pick up a child from door-to-door. And just as an FYI, the Linden Public School District picks up door-to-door over two hundred students. That's right, the bus pulls right up to their house and picks up over two hundred students to bring them to the various schools within the City of Linden. We also make sure that our special ed children that get sent out of district get door-to-door or curb-to-curb service. Lot of the times, we see the buses that are parking on an angle in the middle of the street, and we're getting complaints from the residents. Don't complain. That bus driver is actually parking on an angle to keep people from riding past those buses. And those that are complaining, I beg your indulgence for two seconds, two more minutes, Ms. Council President. The people that are complaining about the buses being on an angle are probably the people that are trying to pass those buses anyway. And it's just a method to stop the madness. You are not allowed to pass a bus while it is loading or unloading, so it really shouldn't make a difference if that bus is on an angle. The only thing that it's doing is stopping the people that just don't care and are going to do it anyway. So, if you have any questions about the quality of life issue when it comes to our children, I take it very seriously, whether it's speeding, whether it's busing. And I do wear two hats. I'm a councilwoman, but I'm also the busing coordinator for the City of Linden, the Public School District. That ends my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Javik?
Yes, Council President. As Chairman of the Fire Committee, the Fire Prevention Bureau collected the following monies during the month of February twenty twenty-five, a total of seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Regarding our Linden Fire Department ambulance billing, the amount of ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents for February twenty twenty-five have been added to the total deposits for twenty twenty-five totaling one hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. At this time, I would like to have an approval for an installation of streetlights. I move for approval of the installation of streetlights on pole, poles number six-three-five-two-nine LD and six-three-five-two-nine LS located at six-oh-six Harrison Place and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Continuing, regarding our construction code, this department has issued two hundred and twenty-six permits and processed twenty-seven certificates and has issued eighty-two summonses for the month of February twenty twenty-five. Monthly revenue is as follows. Building CCO permits and additional permit fees, ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Zoning, one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Court settlements for the month, eighteen thousand dollars. The reflective total being one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Regarding our Board of Health update, the avian influenza, also known as H5N1 virus, also known as bird flu, is a virus that has been circulating in wild birds worldwide. CDC maintains the risk to the general public remains low. Most cases are among wild birds, commercial and hobby poultry and dairy cattle. According to the New Jersey Department of Health, cats are particularly susceptible to H5N1 and experience high rates of severe illness and death. Symptoms in cats include general signs of illness such as loss of appetite, fever, lethargy, respiratory symptoms such as eye and mouth discharge, sneezing, coughing, and difficulty breathing, and neurological signs such as seizure, wobbling gait, circling, and blindness. New Jersey residents who are concerned that their cat may have H5N1 should contact their veterinarian immediately. Residents can also find additional information and recommendations on ways to help prevent H5N1 infection in cats from the American Veterinary Medical Association at AVMA.org. This year marks the thirtieth anniversary, actually, the thirtieth observance of National Public Health Week. The theme of this year's observance is, "It Starts Here." Public health starts locally in the places where we live, work, and play. From clean air and water to increased access to health information and resources, public health is about creating a foundation for thriving communities and healthier lives. It starts here in Linden, and your health is our public health mission. To celebrate, the City of Linden Board of Health issued, has issued a proclamation at their January meeting declaring April seventh to the thirteenth, National Public Health Week in Linden, and we will be hosting and participating at the following events. April eighth, free bone density screening at JTG Center. April ninth, paint and SIP for seniors and their caregivers. This free event will include snacks, drinks to the SIP, and painting materials, and the theme of the painting will be community health. And on April twelfth, Communities in Cooperation Event at the Multilingual Learners Welcome Center. Good evening, everybody. So, in the second ward, gas and water work is ongoing and will continue to the end of the month. Asphalt restoration will follow sometime in April or May. Our Police Department has been stepping up their, their truck enforcement, especially on West Blankie Street, Marian Ave, and Canter. There is overnight parking taking place there, which results in garbage on the street and being left behind. Police be vigilant also of your vehicles. Most of the thefts that are occurring are simply forgetting to lock your doors. As a reminder, the second ward has a dog park on Lexington Avenue where your dog can run free. Anywhere else, it needs to be leashed, for everyone's safety. Also, remember to register your pets, and our Linden Health Department is offering free rabies vaccination clinics in the month of May. With the weather changing, you may be considering home improvements. I just need a little bit of extra time, please. So, with the weather changing, you may be considering home improvements. Our City of Linden residents of low and moderate income living in owner-occupied one- and two-family homes can apply for no-interest loans up to twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for home rehabilitation. If the resident continues to own and reside at the property for at least ten years, the lien will be released at the sale or transfer of the property. If not, the loan must be repaid. For more information and a application, contact Development Directions at seven-three-two-five-oh-seven-two-zero-zero-four. That's again, seven-three-two-five-oh-seven-two-zero-zero-four. I just want to thank everyone for all your support, and I appreciate your interest in our neighborhoods. I can be reached at nine-oh-eight-four-nine-four-four-six-zero-eight, or email me at bjavik@linden-newjersey.gov. On Facebook, Second Ward Councilman Barry Javik. And as always, additional information can be always found on our city website. Council President, end of report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam President. Dear colleagues and community partners, I am excited to announce that I am leading the charge for the Linden Community Youth Work Steady Program with the full support of the Mayor, Council President, City Council, and city employees. Recognizing our limited summer openings for youth employment, our goal is to ensure that no young person who wants to work and learn new skills is turned away. We are partnering, partnering with the Board of Education to create employment pathways starting this summer, with plans to expand these opportunities year-round. We are also reaching out to local businesses to join forces with the City of Linden and the Board of Education. Together, we will build a strong pathway for our youth, ensuring that they are not only employable, but also well-prepared for promising future positions. We are looking for youths who are self-starters and accountable. As a part of this initiative, we are proud to present that Linden High School Teen Job Readiness Workshop by Linden First. Readiness Workshop by Linden First. This workshop is designed to help teens ages 15 to 19 build essential skills for landing their first job. Workshop details, dates, April 21st, 2025, at Linden Multipurpose Center at 1025 John Street. April 23rd, 2025, at John T. Gregorio Center at 330 Helen Street. The times will be 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. What will they learn? Job exploration and search, dressing for success, resume building, interview techniques, mock interviews, workplace do's and don'ts, networking tips, closing the deal. Sandra Jackson has already initiated outreach to the local businesses. We are also planning a kickoff event to further discuss our goals and invite additional partners. Details of this event will be shared soon. Our youth are our future. Let's work together and create an elastic pathway to success for them. For more information to get involved, please reach out to Councilwoman Caldwell at 908-531-0676. For the 3rd Ward Community Meeting, it will be on March 25th at the Linden Public Library at 6:30 p.m. at the Columbia Room, 31 East Henry Street, Linden, New Jersey. Linden Social Services and Community Resources. Linden Social Services continues to assist residents with benefits like the TANF, SNAP, Medicaid, and Energy Aid. For help, visit their office at 1120 East St. George Avenue, Suite 4, or call 908-474-8620. The Linden Home Ownership Center, N4SF, is offering a foreclosure assistance and financial literacy and homeownership workshop on April 26, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Learn about budgeting, mortgages, and first-home buyer programs. Call 908-808-4035 to register. The City of Linden IT Report. The Voice-Over IP Migration Progress. Eighty percent of the migration is complete with full Google Voice integration expected by May. New features include auto attendance, voicemail, transcription, and mobile access for staff flexibility. The lights from Linden Ave to Given Street will be reprogrammed, and we will be getting a left-turn signal light at Wood Avenue and Elizabeth Ave. I know all my constituents have been asking about that, so that is a work in progress, and it will be coming soon in the spring. I don't have the exact date, but we should see it within the next couple of months. I want to thank you for your continued support. There is no me without you. Remember, Councilwoman Caldwell always follows up and follows through, and I could be reached at 908-531-0676. M. Caldwell at Linden-NJ Jersey.gov. That concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mohammed.
Good evening, Council President and citizens. First of all, I would like to wish all a blessed Easter Lent season. And number two, I want to congratulate the Police Department on being a fully accredited agency. This is a big thing for anyone who has been in law enforcement. So I congratulate you all for outstanding jobs that you're doing. I will give you a salute. Ready front. I just want to say something that maybe not being known to the public is that, in addition to Blessed Lent, Blessed St. Patrick's Day, most people don't know that the black, red, and green symbol, which is a symbol of black liberation worldwide, the green in that, in that flag comes from the respect, the great honorable Marcus Garvey had for the Irish people and their fighting spirit and desire to be liberated. So you see, the world is one. We all want people connected, and I always salute the fine people who work for their own liberation. I thank none other than the great Bobby Sands, a great hero among the Irish people, in my, in my opinion, a great hero among us all. And with that in mind, I now like to invite all of you to the Ramadan Iftar Interfaith Celebration. Mayor Derek Armstead, the City of Linden Department of Recreation, in collaboration with the 4th Ward Councilman Imam Alfred Mohammed and the Linden community. It will be Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:30 p.m. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. For those who wish to pray, bring your prayer rugs. It will be at the Linden Multipurpose Center, 1025 John Street in Linden, New Jersey. I want all to come out, show you that this city is a city of interfaith. In fact, America is a city of interfaith. And so we all will join together, thanking God for the goodness of this country, the greatness of this country, the blessedness of this country, and we are one people marching on towards victory to a greater and greater America. You know, you probably heard in my voice that I'm preaching what I've been with all my life. But I also want to say something and apologize. One day, I hear that someone came before the council, and I laughed, but I was laughing out of pain. When one finds it necessary to come before the governing body or August's sacred body and be disrespectful, it's a sign that that person has mental health issues. And we have an excellent mental health system. You can call 211 if you have mental health issues. And if you need transportation to a mental facility, the Health Department is able to provide you with that. And I would say that the Linden Police Department is excellent. They assisted someone in my ward who was about to commit suicide, was transported to the hospital, was saved. So let us thank God for the greatness of America, and let us thank God for this great city called Linden, wishing it a 100th happy anniversary, and I hope to be here when it celebrates its 200th anniversary. Thank you. That's a wishful thinking, but I can, I can definitely keep hope alive. God bless you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rivas.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, citizens of Linden. Good evening, my neighbors in the 5th Ward. I had an opportunity to pass by at least 100 houses within the last three weeks, saying hello to my neighbors, to the constituents in the 5th Ward, and I'd like to say that I am proud of all of my neighbors in the area. We're maintaining a great, great neighborhoods, and I'd like to remind that the spring is here, so I would like to recommend all of you to please do some spring cleaning, keeping our neighborhoods clean. It is, it is the best testament that we are helping ourselves to maintain a great quality of life in the city. At the same time, as I, as I mentioned, I invite all of you to do some spring cleaning. I'd like to remind that there will be a Y garage sales in the 5th Ward in the month of April. It's April 26th and 27th, so all of you who wanted to do some sales, garage sales over there, you have an opportunity now that you're going to get some of that spring cleaning happening around your houses. Please be very kind with your neighbors. Please be very kind with the, with the community. We're being noticing a lot of roam parking in our streets. I'd like to recommend to please make sure that we park our cars correctly, avoid to be close to the curbs, especially when we have four-way stops and people need to see the other side of the road when they're coming in or approaching to the roads. Please be conscious of safety in our neighborhood. I also like to make reference to, not only to my neighbors, to the City of Linden, that our 5th Ward may have everything on it. We have great restaurants. We have great places where we can find anything that you may expect. We have restaurants. We have supermarkets. We have barber shops, beauty salons. We've got everything in the 5th Ward. Please support your local businesses and support them in the 5th Ward. Pass by by the word. We have a great place, a great area in the City of Linden. Don't forget, we are a council that works for the best of our constituents, and I will be more than happy to continue assisting my council members to make the best decisions in, in this chair. You can always reach me at cribas@linden-nj.gov, or at 908-718-7609. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, 6th Ward and citizens of Linden. First and foremost, I want to thank all of our employees, who are the ones actually doing the installing, patrolling, and the hands-on work, accomplishing the things that I bring to them for the Ward. The two autistic signs that I mentioned last month have been installed, one on Smith Street and the other on Wood Lawn. We also got a bunch of potholes filled on Linden Avenue. As the weather is now getting warmer, we're going to be looking at the condition of our streets and filling in the potholes as necessary, and if a street is in bad shape, we'll put it on the list to be fully repaved in the future as well. The dead end on Morris, that tends to get a lot of vehicles stuck there because they mistakenly missed the dead end sign, thank you, because we got two no-outlet signs placed on both sides of the street, so I'm hoping that no more buses or whatnot get stuck down there. Hopefully, that helps that. On one of our complexes in the 6th Ward, a resident alerted me to the fact that it was missing a blind spot mirror. After speaking with the management, they quickly were able to get one installed, which provides a safer pedestrian walkway for our community, especially our students who walk to School 6. Currently, we're dealing with Essex Cars and Trucks going onto Rebecca and cutting through our Smith Street neighborhood, trying to get around highway traffic. We're also dealing with trucks turning onto Wood Lawn to drive, driving down East 12th Street. I assure everyone and the residents, we're working diligently with our traffic committee. Councilwoman Ormon, I apologize for all the emails, but she is on it. We're going to do the best that we can do. We're going to get, get the state involved if we have to with the 109, and we're going to do our best to resolve those issues. I had the pleasure of attending the Black History Program last month, which was absolutely fantastic. On March 7th, the School 6 PTA had an amazing bingo program promoting literacy. So if you are not a member of our PTA at School 6, I urge you to please support them because they do fantastic work. They truly do bridge the gap between home and school. They're amazing, amazing parents who are leading that PTA. This weekend, we are having, we're kicking off the garage sales for this year in the 6th Ward. Right now, the locations are 219 West Linden Avenue, 25 Union Ave, and 127 Jefferson Avenue. There is a possibility of a fourth home holding a yard sale, and I will pass that information out as soon as I have confirmation. I'll update on all my social media pages. As the weather gets warmer, bad actors may be looking to break into your homes and cars. Remember, number one defense, as Councilman Javik said, lock all your doors, because a lot of our police tells us that unfortunately, sometimes they get in because our doors are open. And last, but certainly not least, and I'm going to keep it brief here, I've been reflecting on, I guess, the world, and I work with a lot of different people. I work with people of different religions, races, sexual orientations, genders, and whatnot. I work with Republicans. I work with Democrats. I work with independents. I work with Green Party people, especially in my day job. And the one thing that we all have in common, we are mothers, we are fathers, we're brothers. We know what it is to lose. We know what it is to feel lonely. We know what it's like to feel pain. We have that common human element. And sometimes I feel that, especially in the digital age, society's trying to rip us apart, when really, we're all human beings. We're going to have disagreements. That's, that's fine. That's the American way, having debates, disagreements. But at the end of the day, you're my neighbor. You're my brother. You're my sister. You're my cousin. You're my friend. We are, we are all in this together because none of us are getting out of this place alive. So let's all work together. Let's continue Linden being a model city where everyone is valued and appreciated. And thank you so much, Council President, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Strano.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Council President. I have before me the personnel report for this month, starting with the Mayor's Office. A is, number one, approve the change in the title of Lamari Centron to Secretary to the Mayor effective March 19th of 2025 at the existing salary of $54,801. Number two, in the Police Department, approving the interdepartmental transfer of Jared Jordan Clerk 1, full-time, effective April 1st of 2025, at the existing salary of $40,000, B is approving the appointment of Joseph Santiago as a SLEO 3, effective April 1st of 2025, at the hourly rate of $40 an hour. Subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, the city grants Mr. Santiago a residency waiver. C is approving the promotion of Juan Velarde to Police Sergeant, effective April 1st, 2025, at the annual salary of $128,496. Congratulations. Three, in the Fire Department, approving the posting of 1 Clerk 1, full-time, at the annual salary range of between $37,298 to $64,807. Four, in the Construction Code, approving the appointment of Kyrie Close, a Code Enforcement Officer, part-time, at the hourly rate of $20 an hour, effective April 1st of 2025, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirement. Position is not to exceed 25 hours per week. B is approving the posting of 1 Code Enforcement Officer, part-time, at the hourly range between $20 and $33.70 an hour, not to exceed 25 hours per week. And number five, in the Recreation Department, A is approving the seasonal list that's on, in the clerk's, on file in the clerk's office. And six, in the Division of Public Works, A is approving the appointment of Mackenzie Charleston as Truck Driver, Tier 2, at the hourly rate of $28,000 an hour, effective April 4th, 2025, pending the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. B is approving the separation of employment for Krieger White, Laborer 1, following the end of the working test period that was effective March 11th of 2025. C is approving the appointment of Andres Linda as a Mechanic, Tier 2, at the hourly rate of $28,000 an hour, effective April 4th, 2025, pending the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. D, approving the separation of employment for James Corbett, Laborer, effective March 1st of 2005. E is approving the seasonal list that's on file in the city clerk's office. Seven is in the Board of Health. A is approving the Ampead Practicum MOU for Norris A, TH Goodwin RN, effective March 24th of 2025. B is approving the separation of employment of David Amolcar, Housing Inspector, following the end of the working test period, and that was effective March 14th of 2025. C is approving the posting for a Housing Inspector, full-time, at the annual salary range of $38,000 to $75,463. Eight is in the Tax Assessor's Office, approving the appointment of Pamela McFarley, a Temporary Clerk 1, full-time, effective April 1st of 2025, at the hourly rate of $20.49 per hour, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Nine, in the Tax Collector's Office, A approving the posting of 1 Clerk, Clerk 1, full-time, at the hourly salary range between $37,000 to $928, and $64,807. And 10 is the Personnel, is approving the FMLA and NJFLA leaves that are on file in the Division of Personnel. I move for approval and request a second.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Javik? Yes. Caldwell? Mohammed? Rivas? Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis?
Yes.
And I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate our mayor, our police chief, and his staff on receiving the accreditation award. I know how hard you worked, and I know how much it means to you, and you worked so hard to get that, and congratulations. I also want to congratulate the Board of Health, our Board of Health Director, Amy Paluso, and our Recreation Department Head, Keith Pressy, and their staffs for the recognition as a healthy city. And I, as I was hearing about this last night, there was an article in the Sunday paper, and that was on a computer. There was a list of the municipalities that were at the top of the, top tier, I guess, but I think we should have been on that list, but maybe next year. And congratulations. That concludes my report for this evening, Mayor. Council President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Armstead.
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I would like to start off with our free tax program for the seniors. It's going to be held at the JTG Center, 330 Helen Street. That's going to be on March 27th. There's a number that you can call. It's 908-474-8267. Please call and register, and yes, it is free for the seniors. Okay? We are also starting back the Summer Day Camp Program. You can go on our Linden Recreation website for more information, or you can also go to the John T. Gregorio Center, 330 Helen Street, to register. That number is 474-8267. And you can also go to the Linden Multipurpose Center, 1025 John Street. Okay? The number there is 474-8639, area code 908. And April 12th, Saturday, April 12th, is our annual Easter egg hunt. Mayor Derek Armstead, City of Linden Department and Parks and Registry Recreation are sponsoring this, featuring four hunts for different age groups. There's going to be one hunt at 10:00 a.m., ages 3 and under. 10:15, ages 4 to 6. Third hunt is going to be at 10:30, 7 to 9. And the fourth hunt is going to be at 10:45, ages 10 to 12. And the location is Wilson Park, 1100 Summit Terrace. Okay? Also, as far as 8th Ward, things are really going kind of smooth there, and I'd like to thank all the members of DPW for doing the fine job that they do. There's not been one time where I've made a call and where a resident has had a problem, and they have not shown up to take care of the problem, dirt in the street, garbage, and it is really appreciated. We've had some "Curb Your Dog" signs put up in the community as well, which is needed, and I would like to ask the residents, if you have a dog, please just don't curb your dog and throw the plastic bag in the street, or walk down the street and throw it in the creek. It's improper. You can take it and drop it in your garbage. But basically, everything is really in 8th Ward is going pretty smooth, and I'm also grateful to all the officers. Congratulations. You deserve everything you get, and me personally would not want to live in any other town except in this town with you guys right here. That concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. As day grows longer and the warmth of spring begins to embrace us, it's perfect time to appreciate the beauty that surrounds us and take pride in our homes and neighborhood. I encourage everyone to take this opportunity to upkeep your lawns and gardens, ensuring that our community remains vibrant and welcoming for all. March is also a special month. As we celebrate Women's History Month, I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to every woman who played a role in keeping our city thriving. Your contribution are invaluable, and we are deeply thankful for your dedication and hard work. Lastly, I want to congratulate the Linden Police Department on their recent achievement. Your dedication, hard work does not go unnoticed. And please remember, if you have any questions or concerns, do not hesitate to reach, to reach me at 908-583-7482, or via email at arodrigues@linden-nj.gov. That concludes my report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Houdak?
Thank you. So it's that time of year when spring approaches and nature smiles with community spirit. And this spring, the 10th Ward will be having community yard sales. The one that is marked on our sanitation calendar is for April 19th and the 20th. For those who celebrate Easter, this yard sale was moved to May 3rd and May 4th. I encourage everyone to participate and let us all enjoy the nature around us. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask our new Police Sergeant, Juan Velarde, to stand. We'd like to congratulate you. Wish you all the best in your endeavors. Okay? Some of my colleagues have mentioned there's a tea this Sunday at the JTG Center honoring Women's History Month. The cost of the tea is $15, and tickets are still available. You could email lindencultural26@yahoo.com, or call 908-862-5097. As Councilwoman Ormon mentioned, we're honoring Linda Spano, Terry Todd, and Courtney Valani. I'd like to also mention Wood Avenue. If you have the opportunity, if you have young children, it's a perfect opportunity for them to view some history. We have our Women's History banners out, so please, if you get a chance, take a stroll and look at some of our banners. And May 17th, save the date, that's our 100th anniversary celebration. um, May 17th, save the date. That's our 100th anniversary celebration for the city. That's one, that's going to be our big event for the city this year. Um, know people that have moved out of Linden, please invite them back. We have many activities planned for the day. We'll have more information at the next council meeting, but that date again is May 17th. It's going to be on Wood Avenue. So, um, mayor?
Yes, thank you, council president. First thing I'll do is start with a public service announcement again. Again, council meetings can now be found on YouTube. No cable TV needed. Accessibility for all. Again, no cable TV needed to participate in real time. It can still be viewed on TV 36 and TV 42, although Comcast is experiencing difficulty this evening. First, I'd like to congratulate my police department on their accreditation. I've often said, as a mayor, that I'm blessed to have such a great department. Um, we have a great command staff. We have great patrolmen, uh, and it's just a, it's an honor to be in charge of such a fine group of people. We're diverse, um, and we do understand the importance of being above, going above and beyond some of the other departments that I've seen here in New Jersey. Second, I'd like to congratulate Juan Valarde on his, on his promotion to sergeant. Juan is not only a good police officer, he's a, he's a friend. So congratulations, Juan. I'm sure you and your wife will go home and celebrate this evening. Next, I'd like to, because it's, it's Women's History Month, I'd like to, um, recognize, uh, Mary Ann Estalas Asland, who joined the Linden Police Department in August of 1989, and went on to become the first female detective in the department's history. She was later promoted to sergeant and retired as a detective sergeant in 2013. And all my life, during my junior high school years, I was always in the class with one of the Aslands. There's always, the Aslands and the Armsteads always shared homeroom. So we, uh, became very close to their, uh, to their family. Okay, moving right along. I'd like to report on some of the construction that's going on in town. On Pleasant Avenue, near 109 and Walnut, Walmart, Sparks Car Wash is under construction. Uh, they hope to be operational, um, in the summer. The Holiday Inn Express on 109 hopes to be open for business by the next council meeting. We got our fingers crossed, uh, because we, we'd like, they should have been open already, but there's some logistic problems with the electric company. Jerry Queen, just last week, at the planning board approved an application, uh, for a new owner to essentially demolish the existing building and build a new building on the front edge of the property, similar to the other buildings on Wood Avenue. This will provide two to four additional parking spots that will be created. At 801 West Edgar Avenue, the Exxon and Circle K, where Exxon and Circle K is located, we're happy to announce that last week, the planning board also approved our first raising canes to come to this property. They hope to be in operation about a year from now. And of course, the gas tanks will be removed per NJDEP standards. We also have a Dino Car Wash grand opening, I'm sorry, Dino, Dinosaur Car Wash grand opening on March 29th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 822 East St. George Avenue. As mentioned earlier by Councilman Alfred Mohammed, um, there will be Ramadan interfaith iftar celebration, uh, in collaboration with Fourth Ward Councilman Imam Alfred Mohammed and the Linden Muslim Community. It's going to be Tuesday, March 25th, at 6:30 p.m. The doors will open at 6:00 p.m., and we're asking those of you who will engage in prayer to bring your own prayer rugs. It will be at the Linden Multipurpose Center at 1025 John Street, Linden, New Jersey. And I believe that concludes my reports. Oh, no, it doesn't conclude my report. I do have a correspondence here. I might put my hands on it. Uh, from Clarence Turner, um, from the New Jersey State Police Recruiting, uh, he emailed us, uh, because he's recently been assigned to, uh, the recruiting unit, and he would love to network with here, us here in Linden to see how the New Jersey State Police can assist with events in Linden to promote the hiring process within the New Jersey State Police. Additionally, we also have their Trooper Youth Week program, which is geared towards high school juniors and seniors, uh, and also internships for college students with a minimum of 60 college credits. And again, you know, policing, we, there's a shortage of people who are interested in, in, in becoming police officers, so the state police are, are reaching out to see if we can get our young people to be more involved and more interested in policing. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, we'll now move on to resolutions this evening. Um, we have resolutions 2025-171 through 2025-11.
Madam President, before we move with the resolutions, I'd like to make a motion to remove Resolution 2025-187. I request a second.
We have a second, please?
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Madam, madam president, I'd like to move for approvals of Resolution 2025-171 through 2025-211, with the exception of Resolution 2025-187 that was, uh, moved out of the, uh, resolution package, and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. We also have an additional resolution that was added on this evening. Ask our clerk to please read it.
Resolution to adopt the calendar year 2025 municipal budget later date pursuant to NJSA 48:4-5. Whereas the City of Linden, County of Union, State of New Jersey has delayed the introduction of the municipal budget for the calendar year 2025 beyond statutory deadlines as set forth in NJSA 48:4-5. And whereas the delay in introduction was due to ongoing economic factors, unanticipated expenditures, or other justifiable circumstances, and that due to the economic uncertainties of the date and the cap retirements, the time for accumulating and preparing the necessary information for the 2025 budget exceeds the time fixed by statute. Whereas, in accordance with NJSA 48:4-20, the municipality has adopted temporary appropriations to provide for continued operation of the local government until the formal adoption of the budget. And whereas, the budget will be introduced at the April 15th, 2025 council meeting, and will be provided to the Division of Local Government Services, and will be duly advertised in accordance with NJSA 48:4-6, allowing for public inspection and comment. And whereas, a public hearing on the budget will be held on May 20th, 2025, in accordance with the requirements of the local budget law, and will be adopted at the council meeting of May 20th, 2025. Be it further resolved that the clerk may be and hereby is authorized and directed to forward two certified copies of this resolution to the Office of the Director of Local Government Services, and furnish said director with any further information required to act upon this matter.
Hey, can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for approval of Resolution 2025-212, and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
We'll now move on to ordinances on introduction, uh, beginning with ordinance 6914, please.
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, uh, can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance 69-14, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6915.
Bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $423,500 for network infrastructure project, and authorizing the issuance of $402,325 in bonds or notes for financing part of the appropriation.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordinance 6915, please?
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance 6915, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6916, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-15 parking by permit only in designated residential areas, 7-15.7 residential overnight parking permit, add Section D, Bayway Area Resident Parking Permit.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordinance 6916, please?
Council President, I move to introduce ordinance 6916, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6917, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-33 handicap parking regulations, 7-33.1A handicap parking on-street, delete 418 Husser Street 1 space, and add 1008 Lincoln Street 1 space.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Council President, I move to introduce ordinance 69-17, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6918, please.
An ordinance amending Chapters 28 and Chapter 29 entitled Land Use Procedures and Land Development, respectively, by the City Council of the City of Linden.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Yes, Council President, I move for introduction of ordinance number 69-18, and request a second. Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6919, please.
Bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $3,68,600 for various improvements for the Department of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing the issuance of $863,170 in bonds or notes for financing part of the appropriation.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction, please?
As a courtesy, Council President, I move that we, um, introduce ordinance 6919, request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6920, please.
An ordinance amending Chapters 28 and Chapter 29 entitled Land Use Procedures and Land Development, respectively, by the City Council of the City of Linden.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordinance 6920, please?
Yes, uh, councilman, councilwoman, I'd like to, um, open ordinance 6920, ask for a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6921, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19, Section 1.3, entitled Permits by the City Council of the City of Linden.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordinance 6921, please?
Yes, uh, Council President, I'd like to make a motion as we introduce ordinance 6921, ask for a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. We'll now move on to comments from members of the public and attendants on city business only. No personal, political derogatory comments, not to exceed three minutes, please. We'll start with Jerry Wimbush.
Good evening, Mr. Wimbush. Could you please state your name and address for the record? Jerry Wimbush, 1217 Dill Avenue. Go ahead, sir. Uh, my first concern is, um, the, on Chandler Avenue and Cranford Avenue, uh, we was, a couple of years ago, we were talking about a, a traffic study, and there were so many accidents speeding. I've been living on Dill Avenue for the last 35 years, and I've seen so many accidents. My wife walks my granddaughter to school some mornings. She was almost hit a few times. The crossing guard was ran over on that corner of Dill and Cranford Avenue. Um, there was a multiple speeding, people almost being hit all the time. And when you come off St. George Avenue, there's a straight shot from St. George Avenue to Elizabeth Avenue, and everybody's running as fast as they can go. So my concern is, I think it was 2022, we had like a meeting down at the bowling alley, and the past councilman said that we were supposed to do a traffic study by the police departments about these areas. So we were, I'm wondering what happened to the traffic study? Has anything been done about that on those, uh, Cranford Avenue and Chandler Avenue? That's one of my things. Also, adding to that, if we just thought about a, a four-way stop on these streets because Dill Avenue is the street where the school is on, and the kids walk from, from the school across Dill Avenue, across Chandler, and across Cranford, traffic is bad. I'm, I'm telling you what I see every day. And, and I was thinking about if somehow we can maybe look into a study of putting up a four-way stop. I'm talking about not a stop sign, with just a regular stop sign, but the ones that have the flashing lights where people can see it from a distance. That's my thing. I'm looking at that. Because sometime you Because sometime you put a stop sign in a spot where nobody knows it's a stop sign, and these people are going fast, and all of a sudden they're through the stop sign, and there's an accident. I've seen cars flip over on that corner many times. So my concern is, we need to do something, addresses. And plus, when I first moved there, there used to be a crossing guard on Chandler Avenue. There's no crossing guard on Chandler Avenue no more, and kids walk down that street, lots of kids, some years it's less than others, but it's still a lot of kids down there. So my concern is, we need to look into this before someone gets really hurt real bad. And then we'll say, well, it was an accident, but prevent safety. The police chief is talking about safety, looking, getting ahead of things. Let's try to get ahead of this. Because I call my councilman all the time on these things. And my councilman, he responds to me. He's doing his job, but I'm just bringing it more to light that we need to look at these things more because...
Mr. Wimbush, your time is up.
Oh, my time is up?
I'm gonna, if you have your, take a seat, I'm gonna have Councilwoman Ormon, who's Chairwoman over the Accident Review Committee, update you on the study, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
Mr. Wimbush? After the meeting, please come see me. We'll have an extensive conversation about the areas of your concern.
Okay? Okay, and I'm sure Councilman Armstead's gonna be following through with the traffic review, with this committee to try to push. There's a criteria, so please see Councilwoman Ormon after the meeting.
Madam President, I also like to advise that, I live in this, I live in the area, I live in Hussah Street. In learning of your concern, I'm always going to join my council members to try to look into a solution for this.
Thank you, Mr. Wimbush. Okay, John Kazar?
John Kazar, twenty-three West Montel Avenue. Oh, man, I just walked all the way home and back because I lost my notes for this. So you guys are lucky again. I'm gonna talk a little bit about last month's comments. You know, it was funny that all of us that got up here spoke public comments. The mayor singled out me, singled out Kaminsky, singled out DeMondi, and then Councilwoman Ormon singled out Ms. Malik. The woman that came up here that was the most critical of your administration, it was crickets for. Why? Because she was black? Yeah, I said it.
No.
What? Nothing can stop me. So I'm gonna keep up with the fraud, waste, and abuse theme. I got a lot of positive feedback last month with my comments for that within the city. I found it hilarious, too, that the mayor yesterday mentioned the Cid. The Cid is over budget next week. Next month, they're gonna present the budget, and they're overspending. And Linden is going to spend money hiring a company to find out why Cid is overspending. Again, fraud, waste, and abuse. The guy running it has no clue what he's doing. He's only concerned about his five K bonus for Christmas. What the heck are we giving that guy five K for? Wood Avenue looks like shit. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Telly App.
Please watch your language.
Every month, Telly App is on the agenda with a new contract, okay? Charles Crane used to do it. You might not know the name Charles Crane. He sat in your seat, Mr. Delgado. His father was a councilman many, many years. Charles Crane did it for a hundred and fifteen K for the city and the police. He was forced out, of course, by the mayor because that's what he does. And now Telly App, I think they're up to like six hundred thousand. I can't even keep track of all the contracts they get. Like my father would say, may he rest in peace, kickback city. I could just imagine what the mayor's making off of that. Mr. Mayor, Comcast is working fine, okay? TV thirty-four is running right now. Rozelle, TV thirty-five is running right now, okay? Your a hundred and eighty thousand dollar film crew just can't figure out what's going on. I don't even know where they're, I don't think they're using camera one, their audio's messed up. I think it's over here, and that's not my good side. It's the mayor's cousin, okay? More nepotism, all right? You guys brought in the mayor's cousin at sixty-eight percent more than the guy that did it beforehand, okay? And you guys in January amended the nepotism clause in this city very coincidentally. You brought up FAB, I like that about Ms. Todd in McManus. I have a FAB also. In the sales world, there's a FAB. It's called FAB, F-A-B, features, advantages, and benefits. It's my job to tell you the features, advantages, and benefits of the product that I'm selling to you is better than the product that you have. I'm failing right now to see how the features, advantages, and benefits of this crew. I don't know why we're spending, we're a city, we don't need a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and there's five of them, and they can't figure it out right now. Running out of time, so that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Chris Sands? Okay.
Hello.
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Chris Sands, one two three East Thirteenth Street.
Is someone else signed in here with you also?
Yeah, that's my fiancee.
Okay, if she wants to come up with you, I don't...
So my concerns are, I live between Woodlawn and Clinton on East Thirteenth, and the three-way traffic from one and nine coming around there, they come through there flying. We've been living there since two thousand and twenty-one, so we're new to London. My kids, in total, five kids, that's at the house, and can't ride their bikes. We usually send them up that side block, I think it's called Elm. We send them up that side block so they can stay away from there, but still just trying to cross, cause the speed and through there. We were thinking, if you could just think about speed humps, something that would just slow the people coming through there down. And then on that corner of Clinton, where we have the four-way signs now, it's those Xs with the boxes to tell people not to park right there, they still park there. So when someone like me is leaving my house, I get to Clinton, I can't see the traffic that's coming this way and this way. So then I move out, and someone runs the stop sign because they're not used to them stop signs being there. And my son walks home now. I mean, walks to school now and walks home now, and that's a problem for me because if he can't see it when he's, you know, walking and trying to cross, someone can run that stop sign, you know what I mean? And another thing, we understand the tickets for the side of the street parking. We understand it, we had the tickets, we had about six hundred dollars in tickets, we get it. The problem that I have is not seeing the street sweeping trucks. That's a big problem. We paid the six hundred dollars. We understand it, we're adults, we did it, we paid for it. But why aren't they street sweeping on those days when they're supposed to? And then another thing is, we, where we live at in the middle of the block, everything comes to our gutter in that block because we live right there on that tee. And if there's no street sweeping happening, that garbage comes to us, and then when it rains, we get the worst of the flood, like literally, it's like a pond in front of our house.
What is your address over there again?
One two three East Thirteenth Street.
So we could get that cleaned out.
Yeah, so everything comes there. So that means the leaves from our neighbors all travel to our two gutters right there. And it's been a time where we asked someone to clean, to come, call the city and ask someone to come down and clean it. They did it, but I don't feel like we should have to call them every single time for someone to come down there and clean it. Then when it rains, we have to worry about our basement being flooded. And we have, we also have videos of the street sweeper just not even doing it at all. He just drives through, whets the ground a little bit, keeps it moving, but doesn't actually get the gutters. And then we have to go out there, and we, sometimes we assist, we go out there with our rakes, and we rake it all out into the street so that he can see it. In the last video that we have of him, he drove around it, and we don't understand why. And that's basically it for us.
Thank you. As far as Woodlawn Avenue, I know Councilman Delgado's been hitting, Councilwoman Ormon and the Traffic Bureau with requests for a traffic study in the area there. So, Councilwoman, I'm sure it's gonna be addressed, okay, as far as all the stop signs and the speeding, okay? As far as street sweeping, the ordinance reads for road maintenance, that you have to move your vehicle to alternate side, which includes sewer work, tree work. If we have a big snowstorm, they'll try to do snow removals. That's why we have to move it, even, move our cars even during the winter months. Some people don't understand that, but there is a reason why that ordinance reads that way. We have to move our cars even when the sweepers can't go out for the weather because they have to go out in certain temperatures. If it's too cold, their tanks freeze and stuff, so, but that ordinance reads for road maintenance. And of course, the gutters will have that addressed as soon as possible, okay? Great, thank you, sir.
I'll see you after the meeting.
Okay, Ronald Martins?
Ronald Martins, three twenty-eight Minor Terrace. Union County in general and Linden's Second Ward in particular are being inundated by the construction of new apartment buildings. Most of your constituents feel that this building explosion is not in the best interest of existing residents. Traffic is already often gridlocked on Wood Avenue and Style Street. Adding more cars will only make it worse. I realize we may get some tax revenue, but what kind of tax abatements have been granted? Due to construction, Wood Avenue, the Wood Avenue sidewalk is closed between Elizabeth Avenue and the train station. Pedestrians trying to make their way past the three hundred and forty-four unit monstrosity going up on Wood and Elizabeth are forced into the roadway on their perilous journey to the train station. Also, why is it all rentals being built and no condominiums? People who own their own home tend to take better care of it. You guys are not shy about broadcasting your accomplishments and patting each other on the back. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but why is there no mention of these projects on the city website? None, zero, nada, zilch. I asked the question, but I think we already know the answer. Apartment buildings are sprouting up all over Linden, especially in the Second Ward. Trees, not so much. Well, this concrete being poured brings to mind a Cree Indian proverb written long ago, but still relevant in our modern world. Only after the last tree has been cut down, only after the last river has been poisoned, only after the last fish has been caught, only then will you realize that money cannot be eaten.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Okay, Virginia Malik?
Good evening, Virginia Malik, Lenape Road. My question is going to be directed to the Finance Department, and it has two parts to it. The first one is, we had bond ordinances totaling about four million dollars. What I'd like to know, the first part of the question is, this, these bond ordinances are for what fiscal year's budget? And then the second question, question I have is when, let's say, the police department or the fire department puts in money for various equipments for the whole year. In that budget, is the money's broken down fairly detailed, or just saying maybe for the fire department, well, an engine is quite costly? But is that budget that's coming from a specific department really broken down in quite in detail? And not just saying, you know, capital expenditure?
Is that the end of your question?
Sure, there are two parts.
All right, can you have a seat? I'll have Mrs. Zach address.
I'll just stand. Sorry, I'm weak. To answer your first part of the question, the capital budget that has been introduced as the amended capital budget for two thousand and twenty-five, these are the capital projects, the ordinances that you had referred to, is for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. We plan on introducing the budget next month and then the following month have the adoptions. When the budgets are prepared, we ask all our department heads to follow zero-based budgeting for their operating budgets. And for their capital budgets, we ask them to put together a six-year capital plan. So for the year two thousand and twenty-five, the projects have to be detailed, they have to explain why they need it, what they need it for. They present it at our budget hearings that we have with every department head. So every department head has to have budget hearings with our finance committee, with myself, to go through their requests. The, in order to be considered in the capital budget, it has to have a life expectancy at least five years. We like to do it longer for our useful life, and we also like the value to be at least twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars to be considered a capitalized item. We try to do infrastructure improvements through capital and projects and larger equipment.
And just to that, when you say that...
Mrs. Malik, we're not having back and forth in the comment section. So Zach, are you...
I, she raised a question in my mind.
I'm just trying to answer her questions to the best of my ability.
I have a few more minutes, a few more seconds. Can I ask it?
Mrs. Zach?
It's, you mentioned something about like five years, so is there wiggle room? Like if that capital's not expended this year, and even though it was set for this year, could it be pushed to the next year? Is there some wiggle room between...
In certain instances, we have done that. When we ask the department heads to come up with their six-year capital plan, it's for purposes of trying to make sure that we stay level with our debt. So as that new debt begins, we have debt that's dropping off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting, please? Second.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javick?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.[1562.11]